Good evening. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, February 18th, 29 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have four items on tonight's agenda, starting off with item number one, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the Licensing Board back on February 4th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number two is a temporary Class B beer and wine license for the Washington County Historical Society Incorporated for August, Osage County Play at 320 South Fifth Avenue, first floor and second floor courtroom, March 22nd, 2019, from 7:00 PM through 10:30 PM, March 23rd, 2019, from 2:00 PM through 10:30 PM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number three is a temporary Class B beer and wine license, again, for the Washington County Historical Society Incorporated for August, Osage County Play at 320 South Fifth Avenue, first floor and second floor courtroom, March 28th, 2019, from 7:00 PM through 10:00 PM, March 29th, 2019, from 7:00 PM through 10:30 PM, and March 30th, 2019, from 2:00 PM through 10:30 PM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. And item number four is approve the operator's license, licenses, and the list was in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Be no further business before the Licensing Board. I adjourn.
Thanks, Craig. I'd like to now call the Board of Public Works. We have nine items on tonight's agenda, the first being the approval of the minutes from February 4th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Item number two, the temporary use of the northern half of the employee parking lot on South Main and Vine Streets for the Roots and Branches Annual Plant Sale and Adopt a Plot Days. Presentation by Jim Renke. Jim?
Good evening, everyone. This is our annual Roots and Branches event that they have. This year will be Friday, May 17th, and Saturday, May 18th. What they do is they use the north half of the employee parking lot. We block that off the Thursday before, Thursday night before, so they can set up for everything first Friday and Saturday. Along with this, we also, they also have another event on July 20th and 21st that utilizes the same area, and then also spills into the other part of the parking lot if need be. Staff would recommend approval of the, of the request, and staff would send out notices to staff to inform them of the closure the day before.
Any questions for Jim?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Item number three, permission to advertise contract 19-01, 8th Avenue Reconstruction, Phase Two, Walnut Street to Washington Street. Presentation by Max Marshall. Max?
Good evening. Thank you. This contract is for the reconstruction of Phase Two of 8th Avenue. We did Phase One last year from Chestnut to Walnut, and this is Phase Two from Walnut to Washington, and it includes replacement of older water main. Six-inch line will be about 2,000 feet of water main replaced, also 1,800 feet of sanitary sewer, and upgrade of the storm sewer with the addition of underdrain behind the curb line to help with the drainage issues that we've had in this area. So the total road reconstruction with curb and gutter sidewalk, et cetera, that would be the work of this contract, under this contract. The preliminary cost estimate is $1,311,000, and we would use previously budgeted water utility, sewer utility, and pavement maintenance program funds to cover the cost of the project. If the board and council act favorably with this permission to bid, we would go to first ad, March 8th, second ad, March 15th, open the bids on March 26th, and we would be back to award the contract on April 15th.
Thanks, Max. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Question.
Do I just want to clarify? So is that the sidewalks and everything underneath? Or no?
Yes. When we replace sidewalk, we also replace the stone base.
Okay.
Because we want to make sure sometimes we may find older sidewalk that doesn't have the appropriate base, so we go down to make sure that we have the appropriate foundation. We replace, we put brand-new foundation under the sidewalk.
Okay.
Anyone else? Mike?
Max, is this scheduled, then, to take place this year in 2019, the project, assuming we get bids that fall into place?
Yes. Right now, if we award the contract April 15th, anticipate the contractor could start as early as May 15th, based on our projections with the task that need to happen there. They would need 93 working days, which equates to about 150 calendar days, so that would bring us to late August, early September, if they decide to start May 15th. Obviously, they can slide this a little bit, start early June or something, to avoid the school year, but then they would trail off at the end and catch the school year on early September.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do have a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Item number four, order for removal and replacement of sidewalks, contract 19-01, 8th Avenue Reconstruction, Phase Two, Walnut Street to Washington Street.
Thank you again. So this memo is to, for, to consider our recommendation to approve an order to remove and replace sidewalk. Under our sidewalk program, when we find sidewalk that is defective, we asked property owners to first replace the sidewalk on their own, and if they don't, then the city would come and replace it under contract. Since we're doing the road reconstruction here, we inspected the road for the length of the project, and we noticed some defective sidewalk. So we're asking for this order so we can notify the property owners, give them a chance to do it under their own permit if they want to. If not, we would do it under this contract and take care of the sidewalk at the same time that we're taking care of the, the rest of the road. Those would be for sidewalks that are defective under the rules established by council in 2004. We follow those criteria. Any other sidewalk that would be replaced due to water lateral replacement or anything like that, or even the curb ramps, the city would, would support the cost of those.
Thanks, Max. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Item number five, permission to advertise contract 19-02, Bittersweet Drive Water Main Replacement, and contract 19-03, Green Valley Place and Edward Court Water Main Replacement. Max?
Thank you again. So under this memo, we ask for permission to advertise two contracts. Those are water utility contracts to replace defective water main, not defective, but water main that's aging. On Bittersweet Drive and Green Valley Place and Edward Court, we hired a consultant to do the design of those water main, and then we will hire a consultant. We will send out an RFP at the same time we send those contracts to bid for the inspection of those contracts. On both projects, we will reconnect the water laterals at the main line, and the area of exhibition for the water main will be backfilled and patched. I would like to point out that we do have a working process to do the road reconstruction next year after this project is done.
Any questions? Mike?
Max, I know there's a lot on the plate for reconstruction of roads. Does it, does it make sense to do it this year, or does it pay to just wait and do it all in one fell swoop next year, in your opinion?
Well, usually, we would like to do both at the same time, and obviously, for practical reason and probably economical reasons, but sometimes the urgency on the water main cannot wait, and then we have to take care of it right away, and then we plan for the reconstruction the following year. We've done that in the past. That's what we're proposing to do again this year.
And you've considered the option of moving next year's project up to this year in order to kind of do them all this year instead of one this year, one next year?
Yes. Originally, everything was planned to be done in 2020, and that's how we had scheduled a five-year plan for the road reconstruction, and I'm guessing because of the urgency on the water main, the water main portion was moved up one year. That's why we have the disconnect there.
I guess that's what my question is. Would it pay also, then, to move the road construction project up to match the?
Well, we haven't done that design. We would have had to do that design last year, but at the time the water main project was moved, we have, we had not done the design yet, so we need that time to do the design for the road reconstruction, and that's why the projects are separated.
Okay. And you, you're certain that the water main needs action sooner than later?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve. I, I want to say, as Mike did, it would be nice if we could possibly do it all at one shake because of, I'm sure that the road will be tore up for now, and then there'll be some inconvenience down road again for the following year, but I understand the situation that, that we're in, so I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.
I wanted to add that we did reach out to the residents to let them know about the inconvenience, and I think we received one call, and so it looks like they're understanding of the need that we had to split the project, but we gave them the heads-up on this inconvenience this year and convenience next year.
Okay. Thanks, Max.
All right. Item number six, permission to advertise contract 19-06, Water Utility Pavement Repairs at Various Locations. Max?
Thank you again. This is a project that we bring to you annually. Basically, wherever we have water main breaks, water main issues, the water utility goes and repairs the water, the water lines, and then we hire a contractor to come and do the pavement patches, whether it's asphalt or concrete. So for the 2019 season, we're proposing to advertise this contract to take care of those repairs to pavement following water utility repairs. Budgeted water utility funds will be used for this contract, and like in the past, the final contract amount will be dependent on the actual quantity of main repairs that were done throughout the year. You have a schedule of our anticipated, you have the anticipated schedule in the memo, and we expect that the construction period can extend until late October because water main breaks can happen later in the year.
All right. Thanks, Max. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Item number seven, permission to advertise contract 19-04, install new sidewalk and remove, replace sidewalk at various locations.
Thank you. This contract is part of our annual sidewalk program where we replace sidewalks that are defective throughout the city. Those repair needs are identified either because we receive complaints because they generated tripping falls, or because just the inspection of staff, we find those sidewalk, those defective sidewalks throughout the city. So we have a list of addresses that we will cover. We prioritize, obviously, the areas where we do have tripping falls and complaints from the public, so we'll do those first, and then we'll continue with other areas throughout the city. We have a budgeted amount for our sidewalk program of $100,000, so like in the past, we'll use this budget to cover as much sidewalk as we can. In the contract, we use part of those funds as well for contract administration inspection, and also to reimburse the property owners who decide to replace their sidewalk under permit.
All right. Thanks, Max. Any questions? Mike?
Max, is this for city-owned sidewalks, or is this residential included?
This is all for public sidewalk in the, the roadwayways.
Okay. So the, the next item up here is going to be the order of removal and replacement of the sidewalks. Can you walk, walk us through the process a little bit, when you reach out to the residents and, and notify them that their sidewalk is identified as one that should be replaced or repaired? How, how long are they given to make a decision if they're going to do it themselves, or if they're going to have the city do it?
Well, I'm going to back up a little bit and say that this program is in place because the city is covering 50% of the cost of replacing the sidewalk, and we're doing the order so that we're able to, if we do the, the replacement, we're able to charge back the property owners for their half. On the, on the sidewalk order that we had, just had on the 8th Avenue project, the property owners are given 25 days, so we send them a letter, and they have 25 days to decide whether or not they want to do the sidewalk under permit, or they want us to let the city do it. The 25 days, we sent out the contracts for bid, but we've always, if somebody comes back later at 30 days or whatever, we've always allowed them to do it under permit. We have language in the contract to let the contractor know that, that we give that opportunity to property owners. Therefore, whatever quantity we have in our bid proposal in the contract, that can vary based on how many permits and the preference of the residents.
That's what my question was going to be, is, is there some variance in that bid to allow for give and take of some of the residents deciding to do it on their own rather than being a part of, of the proposal?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Max, you mentioned something about permit. With these contracts here, especially like 8th Avenue, do the people, if they do it on their own, they will still have to get a permit on their own, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Like to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Item number eight, order for removal and replacement of sidewalks, contract 19-04, install new sidewalk and remove and replace sidewalk at various locations. Max?
Thank you again. So this order is similar to the order that we just discussed for the contract on 8th Avenue. It's basically, we would send a letter to the property owners that are listed under the contract for our sidewalk program, and let them know that we're planning on replacing those sidewalk slabs that are defective, and if they choose to do it under permit, they can. Otherwise, we will do it, and then invoice them for their half of the cost of replacing the sidewalk.
Thanks, Max. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Item number nine, state municipal agreement, 18th Avenue Reconstruction, Paradise Drive to Volk Drive. Max, last one.
Thank you. So this memo is to bring to you the state municipal agreement that we received from Wisconsin DOT. We applied for STPU grant for the reconstruction of 18th Avenue between Paradise Drive and Volk Drive, and this is the first document that we're going to sign this agreement with the state to establish certain things such as the funding, the level of funding for design, land acquisition, and construction of, of this road. So based on the level of funding available, the numbers that you will see in the state municipal agreement show that the federal funding would cover 80% of the design phase as well as the real estate. However, 52% of the construction would be covered by federal funds. I just want to give a note here about the, the type of, of grant that this is. Basically, for the design and the construction, the DOT will invoice us for the 20%. As we go, they'll pay the contractor, they'll turn around and invoice us for our share. However, for the land acquisition, they ask the city to upfront the money, and then we submit for reimbursement of the 80% in the end. That's, that's how we did it for the phase that went from Volk Drive to Decorum. And so this state municipal agreement, we've had one for that Phase One, so this is the one for Phase Two, and the plan is to have the construction in 2022.
All right. Thanks, Max. Any questions? Mike?
Max or Ian, what are the percentages, what is, what's the chance that we will not get reimbursed for the, for the amount that we have to put up?
I mean, if we're, if we're awarded the grant and it's part of their general appropriations, I don't think it's a common practice that the state would not reimburse us once that grant program is, I mean, they may sunset the program, but not before they pay out the, you know, and, and if they are, they would typically inform you prior to you spending the money.
Okay. That's, that's, I guess, what I was curious about, why they want the money upfront, just?
It's just a, that's typically a, to prove you've actually done the project, rather than them handing you a check and you never doing the project. You do the project and come back to them.
Cool. Sounds good. Thanks.
Craig? Just for the folks here and anyone watching at home, Max, so we're projecting that Paradise to Vote will be just under $4 million. Money out of pocket from the City of West Bend will be just under 1.7. So that, I guess that justifies the reason that this won't take place until 2022. This is the soonest that we could get some grant money to help save us, whatever that math is, $2.3 million or so.
Yes. We, we had to enter under the DOT program, and they have scheduled projects all over the state, and they have to stay within a certain amount every year, so they can do only so many projects every year. In addition, it takes time to do the design, then the land acquisition, and the construction. So typically, those projects are laid out over four years, the first year being designed, then they have a couple of years in between when they do the land acquisition with the condemnation process, et cetera, and then that fourth year is the year of construction. So this, this is typically the timeframe. For the first phase, we applied in 2013, design happened in '14, and 2018 was the construction.
All right. Anyone else?
Max, you've been pretty busy lately, according to all these contracts. Good job. I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
And with that, I adjourn the Board of Public Works.
Thanks, Andrew. I'd like to call the Finance Committee for February 18th to order. We have a lot, 12 items on the agenda. Item number one is the minutes of the January 21st meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number two is a presentation by Aylers for the 2019 borrowing and refinancing piece that we're looking at. Presentation by Phil Kostin from Aylers. Good evening, Phil.
Good evening. Phil Kostin with Aylers. Nice to be back with you tonight. I have a couple of documents in your packet that I'm going to walk through. I'm going to try to summarize those, and then as you have questions, feel free to answer or ask those questions, and I'll give an answer for you. The, there's two series of bonds that we are looking to have authorized tonight, and for some of the newer members, just from a procedural standpoint, what we tend to do is come to have you authorize, meaning proceed with a couple of financings, then a month later, we will be back in front of you with the actual sale results, and at that time, we'll ask that you adopt the final resolution to approve those issues. So there's a process that we go through in between there where we have a rating call with Moody's Investor Service. We're preparing what's called a prospectus, or it's, in this case, an offering document like a prospectus on the city. We're sending that out to prospective buyers of the bonds, bidders, and then we'll bring those bid results to you next month. And then typically, we'd close- And then typically, it would close about three weeks after that. So that's the process. Tonight's just giving us authorization to proceed. We've been working very closely with city staff and I'm going to touch on a few items that are kind of bigger picture items and then get into some of the detail. Typically, the city, or at least historically, the last number of years have gone through and done roughly $2 million in annual capital borrowing. That is the case this year as well. And if you look at your list, I know you added up, it's about 7.2 million, which I'm sure raises some questions. This year, there's a couple of nuances. One, we've added to the normal $2 million capital projects, $809,000 in water projects to be included as part of this issue as well. So that took us to $2,809,000. And then the rest, the difference between the amounts we're asking you to authorize and the new projects to be financed are all refinancings or refunding existing debt that you have outstanding. Back when the tax law changed recently, there are a couple of provisions were included that dealt with municipal debt and that was a surprise to many of us that have been in this world for a long time. One is that you are no longer allowed to do what's called advanced refundings. And what that is, is an advanced refunding is you're refinancing debt prior to a call date. And every municipal debt issue has a call date. So you no longer have the ability to do that. So what you're required to do now is wait until bonds are what are called callable. And so we have a series of bonds, four different issues that are now callable and we're kind of bringing them all together and refinancing them to hopefully enhance the savings that the city realizes. What we never do is extend the life of the debt longer than it is existing, but rather what we're looking to do is just maximize a refunding savings to the city and in this case also to the water utility. So in the document that you have in front of you, I'm going to go first through the 2019A issue, which is general obligation corporate purpose bonds. This is a tax exempt issue, meaning they're exempt from federal tax for the purchaser. And here again, we have that series of different issue or items that are being included into this $5,230,000 issue. We're again funding the normal $2 million in capital expenditures, the $809,000 in water expenditures, but then also looking to refinance three different debt issues. The first is a 2008, one second, a 2008 water revenue bond that'll be refinanced also along with a 2009 water revenue bond. And then finally, also a 2011A general obligation issue. So all of those are being brought into this debt issue and all being issued at the same time. Why we're looking to do this, the refundings again is for savings. We're looking at for the different series of debt issues, if you go to page one of the executive summary, you'll see that we've identified what we anticipate to be the savings for each of the issues. The water issue is interesting because we are going to refinance the remaining two water debt issues. After these are refunded, you'll no longer have exclusive revenue debt related to the water utility. Now, the water utility still makes payments on these debt issues, but you just don't have the water revenue bonds outstanding anymore. And what that enables you to do is use what is called a debt service reserve fund to downsize the debt. So that will free up available revenue to the water utility. What we're projecting for the water utility is about $412,000 in savings, which will be realized over a number of years. But again, that's, it'll end up being around $35,000 to $40,000 in savings to the water utility. Again, I'm not going to project exactly where rates are going to end up in a month, but we expect you'll see about a $400,000 savings to the water utility. And the water utility, as we are aware, are looking at going through potential rate adjustments. So this will only enhance the cash flow, which will hopefully diminish some of the rate increase that is needed for the water utility. The 2011 issue not only had a portion of being water, but it was also levy related. So there'll be an actual savings realized by the general levy as well. So those are the projects that we're looking to finance with. The first issue, again, we have in this document a lot of information. If you go to page five of the document, that sets forth the timeline and process. I talked about it already a little bit. If you give us authorization tonight, we'll be preparing that offering document. We'll be contacting Moody's shortly, having a rating call in early March, then bring sale results back to you at your regular meeting on March 18th with a closing schedule for April 3rd. We actually, on page six, have the sizing that I just talked about for the A issue and B issue. And on page seven is an allocation sheet, which shows you of the $5,230,000, what portion is being paid by which fund. And in this case, it's really levy and water that it could be paying back that full amount. We do work very closely with city staff on putting together a long-range finance plan. And so we're not trying to just issue debt in a vacuum, but look over the next 10 years. We're constantly modifying that debt structure, modifying what it looks like with when the new valuations come out for the city. That work, which is in very small print, is on page eight. A little bit difficult to read, but on page eight, we do look out over a 10-year window, making a lot of assumptions on growth, assumption on the amount of debt you're going to be issuing going forward, and try to put together a plan to alleviate any kind of spikes in your tax rate for debt. One of the other goals that has been stated by, I know the mayor, and others is you would like to see the overall debt burden of the city remain stable or drop. I can assure you that that has been the case over the last five to 10 years and it'll continue to do so under the plan that we have laid out right now. So that's on page nine. We do a very in-depth analysis, looking at your outstanding debt, your projected debt going forward over the next 10 years, and make a projection based on growth factors of where your debt limit will go. And you had about 34% of your borrowing capacity right now. We expect that even with these capital borrowings, it'll drop to about 32% and continue to drop over a number of years. So I think you're in good financial shape. And then the last couple of pages are the actual refunding savings analysis that we have put together for each of those three refundings that we're talking about. So you have a breakdown that shows you what we anticipate for savings. As always, if the market moves and we lose the ability to refinance these debt issues, we will pull those. We will not proceed with the refundings. We'll pull those out of this issue if we think that you're not going to realize the savings that we're projecting here. So we'll be in constant contact with city staff to make sure that you realize significant enough savings to warrant the refunding of those debt issues. So that's the first issue. Before I proceed to the second, any questions on the initial issue? The second issue is the, it's a taxable general obligation refunding bond and it is for $1,990,000. This is a little unique. You have, you know, you have partnerships in many of your tax increment districts and one of the partnerships you have is with the Hendrix Group in Tax Increment District Number 10. We meet with them on an annual basis. We met with them about a month ago. And at that meeting, they came to the city looking for some assistance in driving down ultimately what they may have to pay in the future in the shortfall, in shortfall payments. The arrangement right now with them is that if TID 10 falls in the rear as an annual basis, the shortfall is picked up by the Hendrix Group. At the same time, the city has funds that have been retained in Tax Increment District Number 10. And the Hendrix Group has requested that some of those funds be freed up, kind of good faith with the city since they have been pretty successful in that tax increment district, and using some of that fund balance to drive down their annual costs, which eliminates or greatly reduces the amount of projected shortfalls they would have in future years. To accomplish that, what we're looking to do is to refinance the, only the TID 10 portion of the 2010D issue. So it's called a partial refunding and that's what we're looking to accomplish with the second issue. So we're going to refinance just the TID 10 portion, apply the $500,000 that's sitting in the TID 10 account to that debt to drive down the debt service and thus help out the Hendrix Group with their anticipated shortfall payments in the future. So we've run through that analysis. We have on the back of this, the last couple of pages of this analysis, a cash flow for TID 10, which shows what the anticipated shortfalls would be after the refunding. They are substantially less than what you, what we identified when we met with them. This is again kind of a partnership arrangement, working with the Hendrix Group. The good faith is that you've retained these funds for an extended time period. They have met most of their development targets. They are up to about $41,000, almost $42 million in new development in TID 10. And it's kind of showing good faith and helping drive down that overall cost to them. I don't think it puts the city really at any risk by using some of those funds that have to be earmarked towards TID 10. These funds would go back to them anyhow at the end of the day. So it's just putting that to work earlier by doing this refunding. Mayor?
Just one more point on that. You mentioned that the current value add there is just short of $42 million. The original value of the Hendrix property when the TIF went into effect was about $6.5 million. So they've increased it, whatever that math is, $35 million or so, and really done the bulk of that work, I would say, since 2014 or so. So is that $41.5, $42 million, Phil? That's the increment that is the value add? So the real value of that property now is pushing $50 million?
Yeah, the base value when it was created was 6.5, almost 6.6 million, and they have increased that value by 42 million. Yes?
Phil, can you identify TID 10 for us by location?
It's the, I'll call it the former...
Sure, it's Tochi, the YMCA, all of that property.
That was much better than I would have done.
I'm just, I'm just trying to picture which one it is and what's going on there and the potential for the future. So they're not necessarily asking for forgiveness of a debt here in any sense of the...
No, what's happened is they have paid into the city on an annual basis where they've been short. And the city has been able to, you know, build up a reserve in that account, TID 10. That can only be used for TID 10. And they realize that money is out there. So when we met with them, they haven't asked to use all of that. If they can use roughly half of that to drive down the debt, which will have the impact of helping them out over the next couple of years with a shortfall payment. Well, a little bit of growth out there in addition to this will eliminate any shortfall payments going forward. So I know there's potential for additional development out there and that would alleviate any shortfall payments.
Right. And from what I understand, they, I mean, they may have started out a little bit slower on their project, but since then have really been doing a wonderful job. So thanks for the explanation.
So Phil, is this finally the year that Moody's is going to appreciate all the work we've been doing here and upgrade us?
Fingers crossed. We'll make a, we'll try to make the strong case as always and if I know the mayor, he'll be asking for that upgrade.
All right, Phil, I appreciate your time. We'll go through each one of these resolutions that we've got here. As Phil did mention, some of the outlets have been reporting that we are borrowing $7.000 million. It's a little untrue, actually it's a lot untrue, based on the fact that we are only borrowing the 2.5 for our capital and our roads and the vast majority of it is going for refinancing of our existing debt. So something very important to keep out there. We're not blowing up our debts here. So item number three is the initial resolution authorizing 1.245 million general obligation bonds for street improvement projects.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number four is the initial resolution authorizing $790,000 in general obligation funds for fire department equipment.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number five is the initial resolution authorizing $825,000 in general obligation funds for water system projects.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number six is an initial resolution authorizing $2.37 million in general obligation refunding bonds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is that a second? Oh, I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number six, I'm sorry, item number seven is an initial resolution authorizing $1.99 million in taxable general obligation refunding bonds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, Phil. I think the rest of these are resolutions, so... Was there? Oh, never mind. Sorry, Phil. Item number eight is a resolution directing publication of notice to electors.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number nine is a resolution providing for the sale of $5.23 million general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2019A.
Motion to...
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number 10 is a resolution providing for the sale of $1.99 million in taxable general obligation refunding bonds. That's the Series 2019B.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, Phil. I think we worked out through all the resolutions.
Thank you.
I appreciate all your hard work, especially on these refunding things you and Carrie and all the others that have worked on it. Thank you very much. Item number 11 is the 2019 through 2021 collective bargaining agreement between the city of West Bend and the West Bend Police Supervisors Association with presentation by Michelle. Good evening, Michelle.
Good evening. So this is our third contract that we're bringing before you. We'll have one more in a month or so, but this is the West Bend Police Supervisors Association, the 2019-2021 contract, pretty similar to the police association, slight change on the third year for the pay, but otherwise pretty much in line with the other ones that we brought before you before. Getting, reducing the retirement, retiree health insurance, offering a VIBA or post-employment health plan, and then obviously a few other minor changes as well as pay. So present for you.
Thanks, Michelle. And just like the other two that we talked about, I want to thank the Police Supervisors Association. I think we had a good conversation and able to mutually help each other out here in these times. Any...
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Michelle. Appreciate it. Item number 12 is a... Item number 12 is a resolution authorizing the appropriations of funds, WCMA graduate internship grant. Presentation by Adam. Hi, Adam.
Hi. So the City of West Bend applied for a grant through the Wisconsin City County Managers Association for $4,000. This was to establish a master's of public administration graduate internship with the city, and we received the $4,000 grant along with one other community, and now this resolution is to place it in the bank account.
Thanks, Adam. I was glad to know that WCMA stands for that and not the Cheesemakers Association like I'm used to.
I'll take a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Finally, we can adjourn the finance committee. Thanks.
Thanks, Rich. Like to call the City of West Bend Common Council from Monday, February 18, 2019, to order. Recognize that we do have quorum here tonight with all eight aldermen present. We have 30 items on tonight's agenda, starting with item number one, approval of the minutes from the regular medium of the common council dating back to February 4.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Pulling out items two and three, as Alderman Christian will abstain due to a position on the board, we will take items four through 21 together.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Again, with Alderman Christian abstaining, we can take items two and three together related to Washington County Historical Society.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Jumping all the way ahead now to item number 22, under items for consideration, is a 2019-2021 collective bargaining agreement between the City of West Bend and the West Bend Police Supervisors Association.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number 23 is amend section 17.495, parent two and four B, to modify the residential fence requirements for fence height and opacity within street yards. And a presentation tonight by business and development specialist James Ranky. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're asking the council to consider an amendment to chapter 17 for the residential fencing, more specifically is for the height requirements for residential fences in the, what we call, consider the side yard of a, of a street yard for undulating fences, fences that vary in height, more like scalloping fences. We're asking that the council consider the maximum height at the peaks of those types of fences to be five feet, and then the lower portions of those fences to be no higher than the four feet that we do allow currently in the code. The other portion that we're asking for consideration is for the opacity. There again, we're looking at ornamental fences in the street yards, again, for the, to be in the side yards or the street yards, which would be more or less used as a side yard on these corner lots, to allow the opacity to be 75%, so it'd be a little bit denser type fence where you have a little more cover versus the 50% opacity that we have for any other fence in the street yards.
Thank you, Jim, and this did go in front of the Plan Commission twice, I think, once for discussion and once for decision?
Correct, yeah. We went back in January for the discussion and then in February 5 for the public hearing. Again, we had no comments or concerns from the general public in regards to the changes that we had.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions for Jim? Mike?
I just want to clarify, Jim, your department has worked hard on this, and you did consult with the police department as well regarding any of the changes that, did they have any, or would they have any concerns regarding any of the changes?
We sent it over to the police department, and we didn't have any comments or saying that they had any concerns with the increase of that opacity in those side yards or the street yards that act as the side yards.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Sure.
Just to clarify, this is, this is in general, just to pan back a little bit, this is to, in a response to the changing of the, sorry, just lost, just lost it. Never mind, never mind. I lost it, I had brain fart.
This was spurred by a resident, I believe.
This was spurred by a resident. We're also starting to see different changes or, you know, different fencing materials that are being, you know, allowed or sold in the, you know, home improvement stores.
Thank you. And staff did do quite extensive comparison between West Bend and other communities also that was presented to the Plan Commission, and I think we fall in line pretty well with most of those.
Correct, yeah. Most of the communities had the 50% opacity. We're just asking for a different consideration on the street yards that are used more or less as a side yard on some of these corner lots.
Maybe else, otherwise I entertain a motion on the item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 24 is approving a certified survey map to create two lots and dedicate right-of-way for Shepherd's Court, and again, a presentation by Jim.
Thank you. Tonight, we're asking the council to approve a resolution accepting right-of-way for Shepherd's Court. This is a two-lot certified survey map for the Fleet Farm development. The first lot, the large lot, is for the actual development of Fleet Farm, and then lot number two is used for future commercial outlots. And we are also creating the Shepherd's Court right-of-way, which is in conjunction with improvements for 33 and stigmatization as part of the development. So we're asking the council to consider the acceptance of that right-of-way dedication.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments?
Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Congrats again to Fleet Farm, and keep up the good work. The snow will stop eventually, we're sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Under reports, item 25 is a report by either Alderman Jenkins or Caston regarding the Plan Commission meeting. Rich?
So, we met on February 5, like Jim Ranky talked about. We talked about the fence requirements, had a conversation there, as long as, well as the recommendation to council that you just voted on. We had a CSM, Certified Survey Map, for school road in the town of Trenton, creating two lots out of a one lot. And then we had two site plans, one for a parking lot addition at the Albright Free Clinic. They're adding some additional parking spots along the side there, and a site plan for an architectural building and parking lot renovations at 307 Kilborn Avenue, so that building that's right at the edge of Kilborn and Main there, that's being renovated. So we had site plan and architectural building plans for that as well.
Thanks, Rich. Any questions for Rich? And number 26 is a report by Alderman Christian regarding the downtown bid board meeting.
Thanks, Mayor. The bid board met on February 5. One of the items that we've been discussing is wayfinding signage downtown, and at this point, I guess collectively, the board has decided to kind of put that off into the future. We're not going to make any decisions on colors or styles or anything like that at this time for what's going to fit properly in the downtown area. We've got a few thoughts going around about it, and we're working with some groups to help develop what that's really going to look like, but at this point, no action is being taken there. We have beginning conversations regarding pet stations. This is something that other communities have done and implemented, little areas where there might be water available for pets, as well as receptacles to put the droppings or whatever you might have from the pets. Pretty good conversation regarding that, considering there's a few of the businesses downtown who are really pushing to be more pet friendly, yet pets aren't necessarily invited to a lot of the things that happen in the community. So there's a debate going on as to if this is the proper step to take, or if this is just a conversation that we're having to have the conversation. Our transportation group, Adam Gitter gave the update on the current water and sewer utilities, which are in the bid. There is going to be some work in the near future going on regarding fixing the water utilities and updates and repairs. So we just wanted to get that conversation kind of on the radar. We do know that that all takes time and planning, so we just are starting to consider some funding sources for some of those future repairs that are going to be happening in the bid district. And then regarding the Commons Task Force project, we did get a little committee together to work through some of the findings from the Commons project. They're still extracting most of that, those ideas and information and formulating some game plans and hope to make a recommendation to the bid, you know, with some options moving forward. We have also supported the idea of what we're calling an entrepreneur's scholarship, and that's kind of being discussed, where current business owners in the downtown who are professionals in certain fields might offer their expertise to potential entrepreneurs as a mentoring program of some, of sorts. So we're looking for ways to really engage potential entrepreneurs in the West Bend area, and using our professionals is a really great opportunity to help support that concept. So a conversation that we've been having and looking forward to implementing that in the future. That's it.
Any questions for Mike? Again, regarding the Community TV Committee meeting.
The ever-popular West Bend Community Television. Social media update, we are up to 8,000 followers on our Facebook page. Our goal is 15,000 by the end of the year. That would be nearly half of the community being followers of our Facebook page, and that's a really powerful way to engage the community. Along with the update of our website, the folks at Community TV are kind of heading that project off, so they've been working diligently with all of the other areas of City Hall, all of the different departments. We're collecting photos from folks throughout the community to help enhance the website, but that's a work in progress, and it'll be a lot of work, but it's, we've got high hopes for what that's going to look like at the end of the day. Our producer, Chris Boriston, is doing the teacher awards again this year. I think this is the second annual, is that correct? Yep, second annual teacher awards. Very popular feature last year and went over really well, so Chris is doing the teacher awards again this year. We found out that we had two videos that were accepted into the Best of the Midwest contest. That's a contest for local cable access channels, community television. I think, I'm not sure which two got accepted, but the video that they did for the Chalk Fest, the video for the Washington County Fair Park, the fair for the 2018 fair, and then I know the Mud Run was another really good video that they produced. So not sure which ones, but I think two of them were accepted into that contest, and that competition is going to be held in the Dells here in the next couple of weeks, and they're going to be going up there and representing the City of West Bend with some of the cool videos that they've been shooting. And then we are also in the process of purchasing what's called, or really stepping up the programming with what's called the Tricaster, and this is something that is going to allow us to stream live different events online. So rather than going through the editing process and downloading everything and going through all that, this Tricaster allows us to stream live events. We tested it at the Veterans event last year at MOA, and it worked really, really well. And so we've got a nice company that's going to support this, and we're really excited to bring the live video streams to our social media and our webpage. So exciting stuff.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike regarding Community TV? Roger, how about a report regarding the Airport Commission meeting? Jay, you were there?
Yeah, just a couple of lease transactions, updates, and then the main level of discussion again is around the facility improvement or expansion. We have a key meeting coming up this next week with the FAA and the BOA. So that's an important meeting that we're heading down as staff and BOA members from the state to join the FAA in Chicago for a key meeting on whether this moves forward at this time or not. We'll keep you posted.
Thanks, Jay. Questions for Jay? Moving on, item 29 is entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute Section 19.85, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding city parcel tax key 291.1119.242.0024.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Stephanie, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Butchlook?
Aye.
Alderman Christian?
Aye.
Alderman Schvalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hooguster?
Aye.
Alderman Maddle?
Aye.
Alderman Kist?
Aye.
We're in closed session.
And we will be coming back for one more item, and we'll adjourn from open session. See you in a minute. See you in a minute.[678.63]